And welcome to order. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
I got the first. Just to interrupt this quickly, Samantha is handling our minutes tonight. She did not handle these before and she doesn't know most of you, so when you make a motion, she needs to know who made it. So if you could make a motion and say your name or something like that, so she picks that up, because otherwise we're going to have to sort it out from the recording.
That seems almost divine.
Thank you.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? In the absence of any, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Samantha?
I think so.
Samantha?
Commissioner Bennett?
I was not here for that meeting.
Commissioner Kerr?
Approved.
Commissioner Burnt?
I was absent and abstaining.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the first order of business is a closed judicial public hearing regarding the consideration of A 17-01, UGB 17-01, ZC 17-01. Ground request for annexation, urban growth boundary amendment, and zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan map amendment. The applicant is requesting annexation, urban growth boundary amendment, and zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan map amendment to change the map designation of PAC lot 101, map 51029CD from residential agriculture two RA2 zone to residential lower density RL zone. The area of the annexation is 2.02 acres. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code section 17.10.040 RL zone standards, section 17.86.070 point B amendments, criteria, and the comprehensive plan. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to carry this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest?
I do. Brown application.
What's your conflict?
There are friends that I actually helped. I went to visit the city.
I see.
Okay.
Thank you. Would you sit?
He's galling.
I understand what I said. But in the evening. Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Does any commission member have any ex parte contacts? Has any commission member laid a site?
Yes.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a three-part application involving a 2.02 acre parcel on Elkwood Mountain Road, which is right at the end of Sunset Boulevard, just outside the city limits and urban growth boundary of Cannon Beach. The three parts of this are annexation into the city limits, expansion of the urban growth boundary, and an amendment of the zoning map. The city limits annexation is fairly straightforward. The request is to move the city limits boundary to include this property, which is immediately adjacent to the city limits now. The urban growth boundary is another line somewhat like the city limits line in Land Juice Parlance. The urban growth boundary is the line around where we will provide, we, the city, will provide urban services in our case.
Mark, I'm not certain if the report is on some mark.
Okay. Thank you. The urban growth boundary is a line inside of which we provide urban services primarily water and sewer, but also city streets, police, that sort of thing. The expansion of the urban growth boundary would encompass this 2.02 acre parcel if approved. And finally, the zoning map needs to be amended. As it stands now, the property is in the RA2 zone, which is a class of county rural zone, and they, once it comes inside the city limits and urban growth boundary, it needs to be placed in the city zone. RL zoning is the adjacent zoning along Sunset Boulevard, so that's what I would recommend in this case. So those are the three elements of the request. There is some backstory on the request related to water. The city discovered that the Browns had been hooked up to water contrary to a policy in the comprehensive plan. There's a memo in your staff report material from 2015 that was prepared by myself and the former public works director, Dan Brassick, that kind of outlines the genesis of that from our viewpoint and laid out three options, and the Browns are seeking one of those options, which is to annex and expand the UGB to include their site. The criteria and procedural requirements for these three amendments are all very similar. They involve a hearing at the planning commission, a recommendation to the city council, where the city council would make the final decision on this. The staff report covers the basic criteria. The kind of expanded criteria, that is, the comprehensive plan policies and statewide planning calls are so lengthy I decided to deal with those in appendices. Riveting reading, I'm sure, but it is an important part of this. It's a legal action. It has to be able to stand up to legal scrutiny, and that's a part of that process. This is not subject, this request is not subject to the 120-day rule, which is the case with most of your applicants. Most of your applications you review are subject to that rule. This is not because it involves an amendment of our zoning map. Zoning map amendments are statutorily exempt from the 120-day rule. But it is not exempt from the requirement that if anybody asks for a continuance here, the first evidentiary hearing on this, that it really needs to be granted. So if there is a continuance request, you will need to postpone your decision to your June meeting, and there's a number of ways you can handle that if it comes up. Let's stop and kind of go through your options there. In a nutshell, you can continue the full hearing, allow continued oral testimony at your June meeting. Alternatively, you can just take oral testimony tonight, close it, and just receive written material for the June meeting. But if you get to that point, let's figure out those dates and talk to that. But it is a request that would have to be granted if there is a request for a continuance. I've tentatively scheduled this at the June 6 city council meeting. If you do finish your work on this tonight, it would go forward at that meeting. If you do not finish your work and you have to, and you decide to continue this to your June meeting, then of course that June 6 council meeting won't, meeting will happen this year and won't happen at that agenda. Staff's recommendation is that we see this as an approvable application based on the information we have in front of us. At the time I wrote the staff report, I did not have any of the correspondence and of course didn't have the testimony. We have the advantage of any of the testimony you're going to receive tonight.
We have the additional correspondence?
Yeah, there's a packet in front of you. Yeah, I, we closed this off at 5:00 today. We were getting emails all along through there. There may be others there, but they were too late.
Okay, this is the call for public testimony. Appropriate criteria being considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the left door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan and municipal codes whose person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties and the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, as Mark pointed out, any participant there requests an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there representation by the applicant?
Yes. Hi, Egrain Brown, PO Box 892, Cannon Beach. Hi there, my name is Egrain Brown. My husband Mike and I, with my daughters Emma and Annika, are here to graciously ask you to follow Mark Barnes's recommendation and approve our request to annex our property into the city limits. I'd like to begin with a brief history for those of you who don't know us and our family. I have been a part of this community for over 30 years. Mike and I chose to meet Cannon Beach, our home, for starting our family and creating a future. This was an easy decision to want to raise our children here. As a young family, Mike and I had to work very hard to achieve our dream of raising our family in Cannon Beach. This is a great place to live and raise children for the supportive community. As a community, we come from all ages and backgrounds, but there is a sense of family amongst us that I love and cherish. In 2005, we built our home on Elkwood Mountain Road. This was our dream to have space for our girls to roam and still be in the community of Cannon Beach. After several years of having problems with our well in our new home, the well completely collapsed. We were without water for over a month, and while exploring all available options to get water and the possible financial cost of developing all water sources, we approached the city to see if they would help us. We reached a mutual agreement that the city would sell us water. So you can imagine our surprise when two short years later, the city decided to take away our water service. In the three years since, we were notified of the city's decision to take away our water. We worked really hard with staff to try and come to a resolution. Words can't express how stressful this has been on our family. We are hopeful that this is close to a solution to us keeping our water. Again, we ask you guys to approve this annexation request. We are anxious to find a mutual resolution for both of us and think this is it. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions for you, Brown? Thank you. Our presentation is by proponents. Ma'am?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Proponents, yes. I needed to get them.
Hi, Lady Gere, PO Box 474. So for me, this issue is more of an integrity issue for our city. Our city has been well aware for nearly five years that Mike and Egrain Brown have had city water services. There has nev, there was never an issue with regards to that for over two years until someone else came forward and asked if they could connect to the city water. Their circumstances were not the same as the Browns', and at that point in time, the city sort of cowered, I'm not sure. But this has been a nearly five-year process for Mike and Egrain. And truly, the city code, the municipal code, has a provision written into it which talks about how one can purchase water if they're outside of the city limits. And so that is what the city looked at when they agreed to allow this. So whether they're, whether the city was right or wrong is not the issue. The fact of the matter is, the city knew what they were doing, they allowed it, they had, said to the Browns, "You pay, you pay, you pay, and then you can have city water", which they did. Their water meter is on city property, which is what the code says. And so they abide by every single request of the city in order to have water, which quite frankly is the lifeblood of a family. We all know that. And so they have done everything that was requested of them. And for five years, you know, for three, I'll say, for the first two, there was no problem until someone else wanted water. They did everything that was requested. And so the reality is, is our city allowed this to happen, and for our city to then come to them and say, "No, no, no, we've changed our mind," or "We made an error," is truly irresponsible of the city of Cannon Beach. And so we need to stand by our citizens, and we need to respect the decisions we made, right or wrong, the city needs to own it. So I respectfully request that you either annex them, annex them in to allow this to continue, or simply grandfather their water service in and make decisions and move on. But it is irresponsible and quite frankly, kind of disgusting that the city has put them through, any citizen, not just them, but any citizen through this process, to torture them and worry them and cost them thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars trying to do nothing more than take care of their family based on what they were allowed to do. So I respectfully request that you allow this annexation to happen. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Garrett? No, thank you. Are there any proponents of the application?
Is that called?
Your proponent?
That's correct. That is correct. Can you hear me all right?
Even without, even without senses, yes.
All right, thank you. My wife and I wish to express our support for the Browns' request before you tonight. We do have some reservations. I think Elena addressed many of those, but the Browns did everything by the book. They followed all the instructions, they asked all the right people, they asked the right questions, and now they're denied after the fact. This is a failure of the city. This is a public works director's failure. Two public works directors actually involved in this. We have a third one, Alan Ward, who is fortunately not involved. We have a public, our city manager, who, when this issue came to a head, did absolutely nothing to manage the city, and factored booted the ball onto the city council. The city council couldn't bring itself to do the right thing either, and they opted to punish the victims instead of addressing the problem and solving it. The reservation I have about this is a zone that Mr. Barnes has proposed in this area. Their current zoning is a county zone of RA2, which allows one house per two acres. The city has an RVL zone on its books, which allows one house per acre, but instead they've opted to have the RL zone, which allows four houses per acre, which would transform this zoning from one house on two acres to potentially eight houses on two acres. And I think that's incompatible in the neighborhood, and that's the only problem I see with this. Ideally, as Ms. Gere proposed, the city would grandfather the use of this water in, find some way to make an exception for the Browns', and allow the city and the Browns to go about their lives without all this unnecessary paperwork.
Any questions?
Can we get your mailing address?
West office, Box 652.
Thank you.
And that's in Cannon Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any proponents?
Elena.
Oh, my gosh, I can't.
Senator Ward, PO Box 116, Cannon Beach.
What was your first name, I'm sorry?
Senator Ward.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a hard situation when, when somebody's had water for this amount of time, and they were told they were allowed to, and then paid for the infrastructure to put it in. Whether it was mistake, mistaken by a city employee, at this point, it is fixable. Can you really take their water away? I mean, would you really do that when there's a solution? I, I think that it was always, always prudent to follow the recommendation of the city planner, and it seems to have a good handle on what is doable. Their piece of property has some constraints on it, so it's my understanding that there is no way eight houses could be put on with two acres, three at the most, and there aren't any. So that probably addresses some concerns about density, but I urge you to send this to the city council and approve them, whichever direction you find, annexation or grandfathering. Thank you.
Any questions for this word? Thank you.
Tracy, PO Box 1237, Cannon Beach. I'm just going to redo what I would, I didn't have a chance to turn it in, but my husband and I are writing to support Mike and Egrain Brown to annex into city limits so they can keep their water supply.
How about this, Mark?
Oh, I always do that, sorry. In 2012, the city allowed Mike and Egrain Brown to hook up to city water with a meter installed, and they have been paying for their water for five years. If an error was made by a city official in 2012, Mike and Egrain should not be punished for that mistake. While we appreciate the city's needs for rules and regulations, we can't understand how the city would allow someone from out of town to build four homes on a piece of sloped property yet refuse to work with a family who has lived in Cannon Beach for over 18 years and worked and raised their family here. This is not a question of building a new house and needing water to that location, but instead, the house and water supply already exist. I also understand that a water survey was conducted, and the conclusion was that there was enough water to have water, to have water there. I think by allowing the Browns to annex into city limits is the only fair solution as opposed to turning off their water source.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other one, anyone else would like to speak in favor of this application? Any other proponents? Steve?
My name's Stephen Sinclair, PO Box 995, Cannon Beach. I'd like to speak about the Browns' connection to the city water. I have sent you an email, I sent an email to Mark, and Sherman emails in your package. I'm going to talk a little bit about these, these issues that I've raised, but in the last couple of days, I've talked to other members of the community, and they absolutely cannot believe that the city is considering disconnecting the Browns from the water. And it really, it really is unbelievable that we're even having this conversation. I think that there should be an issue of finality of decision that hasn't been discussed at all. My guess is that almost everybody in here has a house in Cannon Beach that at one time or another, we asked for, or went to a commission meeting of some sort, maybe a design review board or a planning commission meeting, and we asked for something to be approved. What we don't want to hear is five years later is that, "Oh, we made a wrong decision, and now you're going to have to do something different, and it's going to cost you a lot of money, and we don't have a solution." Because that's what we're asking, or that's what the, the city is looking to do with the Browns. There's no solution out there right now. They've got a wa, a water well that had collapsed, they had really no options at the time, and so their best option was to speak with the city. And the city and the Browns reached an agreement. The, the municipal code requires them to pay additional monies, they paid additional monies, they paid to have the, the equipment installed, and it was very expensive for them. And then years later, there's a surprise. "Oh, well, maybe we didn't do things the right way, and maybe we have to change our decision." It's absolutely unbelievable to me and everybody that I've mentioned. You see how many people are here today? Looks like about 35. I'm guessing that you could have about 1,035 here if this commission decides to move forward and approve this, because nobody that I talked to agreed with what they were hearing as a possibility for the city to disconnect the water. They're absolutely outraged. So I'm asking you to, to really work with the Browns and come up with a, a solution that is acceptable to both parties. It's out there. And really think about finality of decision. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sinclair? Thank you. Before I call on you, Jan, could I get a show of hands of how many other people would like to speak in favor of this application? Oh, okay. Jan? I, I just wanted to check on whether I, I needed to ask people to not, to pretend they're a bits of a, sort of take it as I said, but go ahead.
I'm Jan Siegert Orman, PO Box 778, Cannon Beach. I am kind of, I have some questions. I do support their water not being turned off or taken away. Okay, so that's why I'm up now. I am concerned about annexing, so I would suggest that we find a way to keep their water on, and I'm concerned about annexation starting a precedent, but I do not want their water taken away. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Garrett? Thank you.
Yeah, she's four.
Anybody else for proponents? Are there any opponents to this application? Okay, I, you may have already, it's time for a staff response, and I have a question for you that you probably are already.
Well, let me go through my issues.
I have to go through yours.
Okay, so there were, I'll go sort of from the end first. Jan Siegert Orman was concerned about the precedent established by an annexation, and you're right to be concerned about that, because, you know, your actions here do have effects on other people who are going to ask for that, on one hand. On the other hand, every annexation, actually, every request before you is an individual request, has its own unique factors, so, you know, you're, I, I think you're unlikely to find a fact situation exactly the same as the Browns'. I guess the question is, is you're going to find some fact situations that are awfully close to the Browns' and end up being boxed in by a precedent you don't want to set. So that's kind of the thinking on that. You should be thinking about precedents on these things, I know you are, but I don't, I'm not sure that this really hems you in necessarily, because the fact situation here has some unique things attached to it. A couple people suggested that as an alternative to granting the request, you look at grandfathering in their use of water. If you read that 2015 memo, that was kind of one of the options that we gave the council, and the council rejected that. So I guess my advice to you would be is, the council, our boss, has already considered and decided not to do that. I would urge you not to re, rethink that, or feel free to rethink that, but that, the council took that option off the table in 2015 when they made their decision, and that's not what's before you tonight. We know that might, in retrospect, have been a good idea.
It is a different council.
It is a different council, yeah. At least two of the five are. The RVL zone that Mr. Rupert mentioned as an alternative to the zoning here, that absolutely is something you can consider. I recommended the RL zone, because that's the adjoining zoning on Sunset, and it kind of makes for, well, on the one hand, kind of just consistent mapping. It also avoids a problem which planners call spot zoning. In states other than Oregon, you usually hear spot zoning with the moniker "illegal" in front of it. It's not illegal in Oregon, but spot zoning is, in general, unless there's a pretty compelling reason for it, something we want to avoid if we can. That said, I don't think it's off the table for you to consider a different zone or a lower-density zone. But I also agree with the comment that, and somebody else made, I can't remember who now, that there are other things in play besides the base density in the zone here. One of them is the slope density requirements, which I think you're familiar with from other discussions we've had. Because this is a fairly steeply sloping piece of property, I certainly couldn't, as an administrative matter, approve those extra lots or home sites on this property, even though on first blush, the acreage would, would meet it. But because of the steep slope on the site, anybody who's going to try to develop extra lots there would be, under our current code, coming through you for something, plan development, variance, some other type of zone change. It's hard to know exactly what that would be, but I don't think that that is something that, I'm confident that that's not something I could approve as an administrative matter on that zone, given that zoning and the slope on the site. So you do have some protections. They're not ironclad, but they're, they're out there. And then you also have the option of putting a lower-density zone on it, too. So those were the issues that I saw that I wanted to respond to.
If I remember correctly, on analogous matters, we would have the option of recommending to the city council. to the city council one of these, let's say, for example, grandfathering, but also saying, if you don't grandfather, we could suggest that you approve it with the downzoning or whatever the.
Yeah, yeah, you can give them kind of a nuanced recommendation with a kind of alternative pieces. Yes, you perhaps you could do that.
Okay. We're open for discussion. People have anything to spare express or things to add or say for?
Well, I personally feel that they should be grandfathered. I would prefer to ask to.
I think we may be at a place where you could put that as a motion, and we can discuss it as a motion.
I moved that we decide to grandfather the property.
And probably, they'd be recommending to the city council. Okay.
Yeah, and Mrs. Robyn, Rizley speaking.
I second that, in a divine way, Joe Bird.
Is there some discussion?
Yeah, the reason why I support this is because I think a city screw-up, running around looking for a fix, is not a good way of thinking about snatching new chunks of territory into the city, into city homes. I think if you put that up against continuing what the city already agreed to, that it's already cost people money, which the city might have to return.
That would suck.
That just extending what the agreement was from five years ago seems like the least expensive, the least troublesome in terms of future annexations. And I don't know if you, you know, there's someone else saying this will never be done again, you know, which we can't really do, but I think that I'd rather worry about somebody having to pay extra money to the city for water anywhere along the strip of that road than have to worry about everybody who has two acres or four acres or whatever on that road suggesting that instant annexation would be a lovely thing. We can, you know, leave six houses on the spot and go to town. So that's why I support continuing providing the water.
My concern is that that would probably be the best solution. I think this is also a reasonable solution, as proposed here. If the city's already, city council has already rejected it once, that bothers me. You keep sending these people back and forth, and back and forth, like ping pong game. So I prefer the solution.
The application, what they are asking? Do you, I don't remember what the timing's been. Do you remember, or can you reconstruct what the city council's thinking was in rejecting that before?
No, I don't think I could. A lot of it happened in an executive session with their attorney, so I really, I would be on very thin ice trying to reconstruct that, since I was not ready to be a good part of it.
In general, I know that just as a matter of public policy, you don't want to grandfather things willy-nilly. Would you be willing to give us a brief argument, whether it's devil advocate or not, for why you don't want to grandfather things?
A lot, well, it's not, yes, I can, and it's, it's not so much the grandfathering part of that, it's the idea of providing water outside the city limits. A lot of cities do that. Moreton, Seaside, Astoria, they all provide water service beyond their city limits. Moreton, for instance, I think serves more people outside their city limits than inside the city limits. So it's not uncommon for cities to serve outside the city limits. Cannon Beach is, got a couple of unique things that suggest that we might want to handle that differently. Our source supply is more limited than those other cities, so we don't have a lot of extra capacity, although we do have some extra capacity. And the other thing is, you know, in the past, we have fairly consistently said, when people outside the city limits have asked this question, can we run water up to our house? We've just said, no, you're outside the city limits. We have this ironclad policy in our plan. And while we breached it at least once here in this case, and the council's thinking on that, as I understood it was, you know, yes, that was a mistake, but our mistakes in the past aren't going to guide our actions moving forward. We need to hold to that policy, which we've adopted. It doesn't fully get at the grandfathering thing, but it does explain, and I think it was a concern, that if we start having, ignoring that policy, just either informally or formally just delete it, and serve water outside the city limits, that that's going to lead to some other unforeseen or foreseeable problems that they didn't want to run into. How are we going to limit that? How, at what point do we say no? Right now, we say no at the city limits line. If that's not where we end that discussion, where is it going to end? And they were worried about those lines. Yeah, those water lines extending outside the city limits, a fair deal, and we still have control over who we let on them, but as a policy, it's easier to just say no at the city limits line, it's kind of an easy, clean policy to enforce. Except, we clearly didn't enforce it, at least in this case. There are a couple of other, I don't know the number, less than a handful of other water users outside the city limits who get city water. Those people were grandfathered in a different process. They were on water systems that existed before we municipalized some private systems. So they were grandfathered in a much more literal sense. They were there before the city water system existed, and it was only fair to just allow them to continue under an arrangement they had agreed to. That same line, kind of logic, certainly could be applied to Browns. The council decided it didn't apply directly. I'm making this sound like where the council was trying to beat out the Browns, and that's not the case, although it may feel that way to the Browns. I don't think there was any intent. I know there was no intent to just inflict needless harm on them. They were more concerned about policy implications and how they manage things going forward. And that's my opinion about what happened.
If we were to take the course that I asked you about before, if not this, then that, procedurally, do we want to proceed at some point to a vote on the present motion, and then add the addition, or procedurally?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think a vote on the current motion makes sense, and then if there is going to be a Part B to this recommendation, somebody would make that motion, and you would vote on it, and at that point, I would ask you, one of these is your first choice, and one of these is your second choice. Tell me, give you some guidance here. So I guess that's the way I would handle it. Vote on what you have in front of you, see if there's another motion. If there are two motions that both succeed, I will ask if there is a first choice and a second choice here.
Okay. Would you accept an addition to your motion, that this be recommended to the city council as our first choice?
Yes. Grandfathering.
Grandfathering.
And if we are talking about the other option, I would like to see a lower-down city priority.
I think we're going that way. They're already willing to accept that addition also. If that's our first choice.
Our first choice is.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I seconded, I believe.
So this is a two-part motion.
Well, there may be a follow-up motion, is my understanding.
Do we want to have Robyn restate her motion for the record?
Probably a good idea.
Okay. Robyn, would you say whether?
I moved to grandfather the Browns' water supply into, am I supposed to be doing the option also?
No. Yes, if we recommend it, it's the city council, it's our first choice. Is there further discussion before we move to a vote? I think we have at least a majority on this. Okay. We call a vote, please. All right.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr? Oh, I'm sorry, she's out. Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's going to be another motion here.
Bennett makes a motion.
Yes.
Moving along to this motion, that a second choice to the city council would be to approve the application as it is, except reducing the residential density zone.
That probably means you would go to the R V L zone.
R V L zone.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there discussion of that? Okay. Would you call a vote?
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
No.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else on that?
So just for the audience's benefit, this will go forward at the June 6 city council meeting as a public hearing to receive this recommendation, and that June 6 council meeting will also be a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark the panel at the council meeting, please.
Seven o'clock.
Moving along to the second order of business.
I'm going to have to change all that.
I want to wait till the council.
Okay.
Wow. That really is moving it for the.
Okay, people are talking. You've got no last pick down. of S R 17 dash, there are two. What's the pronunciation of the name? Severson?
Severson.
Severson. Severson requests for a setback reduction in conjunction with construction of a new single-family dwelling. The applicant requests setback reduction to permit a front yard setback of five feet in conjunction with construction of a new single-family dwelling. The property is located at the end of the Vesna, Vesna Street is known as tax lot flat 500, map 51031 A B, located in residential modern end to the R1 and oceanfront managed public light opening zone. The property is owned by John and Elizabeth Paul. Municipal code, section 17.12.040.B.3 residential modern end to the R1 and standard. Requires a minimum front yard setback of 15 feet. Request will be reviewed against Municipal Code, section 17.64.010, setback reduction provisions established. Does anyone object to the suspension of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member, boy he or she has a conflict of interest? Thank you. If it gets too warm later.
Don't be gone.
Does any commission member, boy he or she has a personal bias? Does any commission member have any ex parte contacts? Does any commission member made a citation? So, thank you. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a request by Mitch and Kim Severson. They're the property owners of this vacant lot at the end of the Vesna Street. It's an oceanfront lot, and it's in the R1 zone. This is the vacant lot, so it's a kind of prospective setback reduction for new construction here. The proposed setback reductions are laid out on the table there on the staff report. This is a somewhat complicated lot, because it's an oceanfront lot, so it has the oceanfront setback, also a flood hazard affecting this lot, and there are some trees that are strategically located here that make it difficult to build on the lot. It's a corner lot with a long access adjacent to the street, so those are features that make this a somewhat challenging lot to build on under any circumstances, but certainly not a buildable by any stretch. It's a very much buildable lot. These are criteria that you've seen on many other setback reductions, criteria here, the same. The parts that I believe are missing here are drawings of the proposed house, and particularly elevation drawings, that show kind of the view from adjoining properties. And this, there's three criteria that really get to that, that I think you need, that kind of information, make a defining on those. Those are A2, A3, and A7. A2 deals with protecting significant views of the ocean. A3 has to do with interference with solar access, and A7 has to do with reducing the amount of privacy that would be available on adjoining properties, and I'm not sure you can make those findings without additional information. I communicated this to the applicant's architect, and he may well come in with information tonight that fills those gaps. Absent that, if he doesn't, then I would recommend that you either continue this or deny it. If you continue it, this is an application subject to the 120-day rule, so if the applicant requests a continuance to provide you with additional information, you should ask the applicant whether they're also going to toll the clock for you. You can't demand that the applicant toll the clock, and you certainly can't tell them that it's a, you aren't going to grant this if he doesn't toll the clock. I'm here to tell you, if you don't, if he does not, is unwilling to toll the clock, you should think strongly about denying it instead, because we will run out of time on this one if there's an appeal to the city council. That's all I have in my staff report.
Any additional correspondence?
Yeah, there's two things. One is a large format site plan that revises and replaces an earlier one you have, and a letter from Luke Colvin, our verdict retained by the applicant.
And for some reason, I did open this up, but I gather there aren't any drawings of the house.
No, it's a more detailed site plan with some extra information on it.
Oh, I see. I do now find out what those black spaces were on the small pieces, to say, whatever size. This is a call for public testimony. Considered criteria to be considered or noted in the staff reports and listed on that criteria issued to the West End. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan of the municipal purpose. The person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements that this is sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the party's an opportunity to respond to the issue. Concludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, which was denied as much said, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests. By continuing the public hearing, the legal record opens for additional written testimony and arguments and evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name. State your complaint in mailing your address and if appearing to represent it, capacity to identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Yes.
My name is David Vanea, Post Office Box six four eight, Toleman Park, Oregon nine seven one four five. And I represent Mitch and Kim Seiverson, the new purchasers of the property. So, Mark, I believe you identified them as the owner, which I think in fact enclosed on the property, so they in fact are the owners of the property. I have brought some supplemental information I'd like to submit to you this evening. I did want to mention that if it is a case where you do not feel that information is adequate to make a decision tonight, we would certainly be willing to hold over till next month, as compared to being turned down, frankly. But I talked to the Seiversons about it, and we'd rather provide you additional information if you see fit. So, Mark, what was the exact term? You want to, we want to keep the clock running, basically? Is that essentially it? That we need to hear from us?
No, actually, the opposite. If you ask for a continuance, we will also ask if you're going to toll the clock and stop the clock from running during that period.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, in other words, it, we don't run out of time that way? So, okay. Let me hand out this additional information if I could. And there's two different aspects to it. One is actually an update to even the supplemental site plan that you have in front of you. The other one is a three dimensional representation of the proposed house, both with and without the variance. So, let me hand these out to you first, and so once you have them in front of you, you might continue them.
Can you make a call?
Sorry. Do you have one more set, David?
I sure do.
Great, thank you.
Could we use this easel? Mark, is it okay if I step away from the mic?
Sure, yeah, speak up.
First of all, what I wanted to share with you, and what I added to this site plan that I passed out, is actually a half sized site plan from the twenty-four by thirty-six that you submitted previously. But what I wanted to do was highlight a couple important factors that I can help clarify what we're asking for. There's a solid outline of the proposed house and garage shown. There's also, what I had to add is a dashed line representing what the house location would be without a variance, without the variance we're asking for. I think it's pretty obvious that the house would shift south or down one feet, approximately ten feet. So, the front yard would go from the five feet we're asking for to the full fifteen feet, that the rear yard would go from fifteen feet to five feet. And I think that's significant for a couple reasons. One of them is, the major reason we're asking for the variance is the retention of the trees. And I think all of us have experienced, and I have to admit I'm guilty of designing some projects in the city of Cannon Beach that require trees to be taken out. And I gotta tell you, it's refreshing to have a client that's hoping to keep these trees and design a house around it. So, that's one of the main criteria I gotta tell you that, and the reason we're asking for the variance is to retain these bigger trees. And they are major. There's a ten inch, eighteen inch, and a twenty-two inch spruce on the site. And we've consulted Arbor Care Tree Service for their recommendations. We intend to employ them during excavation and have been under contract to do any necessary root trimming. We have a letter that we submitted stating their recommendations, and I'm confident the trees could be saved and be tamed for many years to come. So, again, that's one of the main criteria we had. The other thing I'd like to point out is enhanced fire protection, and I know it's one of the criteria. Even though without the variance, we would have adequate separation between the new house and the Stepney Inn. The Stepney Inn is actually located four feet nine inches off the common property line. Technically, we can feed a separation in the building code to not require firewall. So, we would actually, frankly, need to make that five foot three to complete that ten foot separation. There is, however, a distance less than that. It's somewhere around three foot nine for the garage portion of the Stepney Inn from the north property line or from the common property line. And fortunately, we're stepping the garage back, and the variance, if granted, would kind of eliminate that complication of that three foot nine distance that is definitely currently is off the common property line. Couple other factors to consider. I know the adjacent neighbor in the house directly to the east. Mark, did you, did we get a letter from them, I believe?
What was their name?
Is it Carter Caldwell?
Caldwell, yes. There's a email dated in May twelfth.
I think they were objecting to the destruction of their views from their west window. And that kind of brings me to the rendered elevations that we prepared. Now, even though their view is more directly west than the images that we created here, what we did was actually created a three dimensional model to scale of the house. So, the shape, footprint of the house matches with the site plan. But they then inserted that into the photograph to represent the difference between with the variance and without. And I would contend that either way, either with or without the variance, their view is gonna be impacted. So, the reality is, and you can, and you can kind of judge that based on the site plan as well, that they're in gabled windows right now, are willing to be looking at the site of this house, whether the variance is granted or not. So, while I appreciate their concern, and I recognize that they have an argument, but again, I don't think it's impactful, one way or the other, based on the variance. The other thing I might point out, just as a side note, that existing house is already six feet off the property line. And that was a dimension I added, that's not from the surveyor, but it's tailed from the surveyor's drawing. So, they're six feet off the property line, we're asking for five. It's just kind of an interesting site, I guess, nothing else.
How long has that house been there?
You know, I don't know. That's a good question. It's, it's judging from architectural style, probably since late forties or the fifties. So, it's probably prior to certainly a burn.
All right, just let me see if I understand. So, you're kind of like swapping the setback?
Yes.
From the north to the west?
Exactly. North to the south.
Oh, to the south.
Yes. So, currently, the required setback is fifteen feet, because this is actually considered a corner lot. So, it's technically fifteen feet here and five feet here. And we're swapping that. So, we're going to five feet here and fifteen feet here.
Okay. And the oceanfront is the same, doesn't it?
The oceanfront's the same. That's correct. Now, that leads me to another issue. And again, I mentioned increased fire protection. We all know about the ski lot apartments and recent fire area on town. This portion of the house, because the Vesna dead ends here, is really gonna be inaccessible for fire apprehfts. I didn't go to the trouble, and I probably should have, of reaching out to Chief Benedict to find out his take on this, but I'm willing to bet who would far prefer to have this increased distance, especially given the fact that the closest he'll be able to come to any potential fire between these two buildings would be the end of the dead end street and not have access in any way other than walking or running around the end of the house or the end of the Stepney to fight a fire.
I didn't look to see where the nearest fire flood was, do you know?
You know, I didn't either. I was missing that. So, again, I think it's a major advantage, not only saving the trees, but enhancing separation there. The other thing, again, is that we're kind of consistent with this six foot setback with a five foot setback here. So, it's kind of, there's some consistency in having a house located where we're closing it.
How many square feet is the whole house, close?
It's right around, which I don't have a number for me. Are we about twenty-one? Yeah, twenty-one hundred square feet. Yeah, yeah, it's right around twenty-one hundred square feet. And we, the reason I did bring the plans is we're still evolving them, actually. We're still working on the design. The house, as you can see from the color renderings, is going to be oriented to the north and to the west. There's very few windows on the east and the south, just because there's nothing to look at. I think that's pretty obvious from the proximity of the Jason buildings. The other thing we're doing is purposely shifting the building as far west as we can, just again to obviously maximize the views for the Seiversons, but also it's gonna create the largest separation we can between this and the adjacent house. One other thing I should point out, this is actually an approximate edge of the street right now. The Vesna's not improved. I don't believe there's any plans to improve it anytime soon. But that, the fact that there's only five feet to the property line really isn't to be evident in the final, the final development, because the Vesna's actually unimproved, and so the edge of the gravel is actually probably an additional twelve feet past the property line. And again, that's, that would change upon street improvements, but again, I don't see that changing anytime soon. So, anyways, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are those lines radiating out from the trees representing the drip lines of the?
They do. In fact, if you look, there's a note here, drip line measured here. So, yes, they are quite sizable trees. And, and I feel pretty good about the way we masked the house, too, because we're really pushing the two story portion of the house further to the west from the tree. So, it's very likely the canopy, the trees, are gonna overpass the one story garage.
Were the tops of those trees blown off at some point?
It looks like it, yeah.
It looks like it.
They don't look like they're in the correct shape. No, it doesn't. But again, Arbor Care made an assessment and felt they were worth saving, and I'm hoping we can.
It looks to me like oceanfront trees have gotten water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking at how much, I'm, I'm not an arborist by a long stretch, but is there a generalization? And you, you can tell me whether you have expertise on this or not, whether there's a generalization that the roots probably go out about as far as the, as the?
The canopy?
As the canopy?
Yeah.
Mark, that you're?
That's a rule of thumb you hear a lot.
Yeah.
That doesn't look like very much of it is in the footprint of either the, either with or without the variance.
Yeah.
I'm sure folks that, that look was that concerned, but maybe the garage, much more.
Yeah. And I, I actually saved the house out with Luke from Arbor Care. And again, that's why he wants to be involved in the excavation, obviously, so he can make, make his own, I guess, modifications cleanly of the root system rather than coming after the excavator's already been there. So.
Could you, uh? Move the garage forward but keep the house with fifteen foot?
Oh, we could. We could actually shift the house, even with the front of the house, excuse me, shift the garage even with the front of the house to help supplement?
Yeah, I mean.
Or help encourage the? Yeah.
Not in, not the way of a post chair, but if you?
Yes. In fact?
We leave the house where, right in the?
Cause you're trying to have a.
Only, only get the variance on the garage and not on the house. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Oh.
That, that looks like it, but your dress, but almost a hundred percent of the root issue and canopy.
Yeah. And was? And, and not, not shift the house, just garage?
Just garage.
Yeah. I guess that wouldn't be our preference, frankly. I mean, part of it is that we'd end up with a house so very close to the Stepney Inn, which I guess isn't, isn't desirable.
I, I just tried to eyeball that, especially without having an, an image of what the house would look like. It, it looks like no matter where you put it on that plot, you're not gonna have any view of the rock, am I right?
Uh, that's correct. Yeah.
That's a sort of more question of what, what patches of ocean?
Right. No, that's exactly right. There's the adjacent hotel, it's labeled as the house by the surveyor, but I think we all know that that's a hotel building, right?
Right.
And that's really gonna eclipse the view of the rock. But, but still gonna have an ocean view.
Yeah.
One of the, you know, I, this is, I drove around quite a bit, and it's one thing to talk about, you know, of the house just to the east not being really any more obscure than, from the, from the view than either way to go. It is actually going to obscure some of their view more if you shift to the house up to the north, as a matter of fact. But, but also, there are all kinds of, you know, that street is really pretty well built up.
Yeah, yeah.
And all of those houses get a peek of the ocean, as the real estate crowd talks about it. All of those houses get a peek of the ocean as the real estate crowd talks about it. You know, and, and moving that house that's right on the ocean like that, ten feet closer to the road, is going to have a market effect on the views of all those houses coming up that street.
Yeah, and that's what I tried to illustrate.
It doesn't show that, like, you know, that's not looking from the, you know, from the.
Right, 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 no, you're right. This is actually looking from the neighbor right here. So.
So we're in Seabreeze property or?
Right, the house just to the east of the Seabreeze property. And so, yes, there's a gap, you know, it's about seventy feet from here and about sixty feet from here. So, you know, it reduces this, yeah, there's about eighty.
Eighty, excuse me.
Yeah.
Behind that house to the east, there's a couple of trees in the houses. So that, that does impact their, reduces their own trees.
Oh, yeah.
Behind that house to the east.
Yeah.
But they can see, though, at this point, they can see to the north more of the ocean than they will be able to.
From here?
Yeah. Because of, because of the width of the, the gap, the fifteen-foot setback, that ten feet is going to affect just how much of that ocean they, you know, they can see. And that's a, that's a number of houses whose views are going to be affected. That's really my, my objection to what you're, you're implying here, especially since you've got, you know, a lot that you can, you can shift that house on.
We're only going to bring it out to the house, it's almost even with the house to the east of us, right? So, you know, the house to the back.
Yeah, can Mitch, again, myself testify as well?
He's going to testify.
I, I don't think we're going to have both of them up at the same time. It's certainly going to be welcome to.
Okay, okay, okay.
So I guess what Joe was saying, that it's, the house to the east isn't going to be, maybe directed to the east isn't going to be impacted, but other houses, it won't be much impacted, but other houses will be. Do you think that's true?
Well, this, this is the view from this adjacent house directly to the east. And, you know, I, I actually took this photograph this morning and based the photo rendering on it. So the, the order of magnitude of the impact, I guess, in my opinion, is pretty minimal. You know, you can, you can compare the two photographs to yourself and see what you think. I guess it's a, it's a real, it's a question of really weighing the impact of the view versus saving the trees, in my mind.
Joe, what about you, did you see, you said you observed other houses that were being impacted besides this one? Take over here?
Yeah, cause there was like six houses or something like that on that street on the north side. And, and all but one of them, I think, have access to a view of the ocean. It's, it's, it's a glimpse of the ocean, I guess, but it is what it is. And since this is an oceanfront property with, you know, with plenty of view of the ocean, I don't, I just don't see the argument as one of saving, you know, saving three trees that should have been dimmed out at one point, you know, their past lives versus affecting people's views. I mean, the reason why people want to be on the west side of Hemlock is that, you know, they can have a street view of some ocean. And most, most people try to build to get some of that. And I think when, when you're building a piece of property that's, that's a wax slate, it's a function of this body to not just worry about what's happening in one house next door, but also, you know, what's happening to the rest of the, of the street, the houses on the rest of the street and other houses that might come in at a later date as well. So it's not just a matter of, you know, of, of one person's view as opposed to, as opposed to slightly less of one person's view. It's a large number of people, and it has future impact as well, and that's why we have setbacks.
When you talked about the fire thing, is that amount of one foot, or did I misunderstand that? You said that, that they were, that the next door neighbor hotel, Stephanie Inn, was four point nine feet, or four, was it four foot nine inches?
Yeah, four point nine feet. Yeah, so, I mean, it's essentially ten feet, or, excuse me, essentially five feet. And we would be, without the variance, another five feet. So we, we do meet the ten feet minimum.
Okay, for fire?
For fire separation, without a fire law.
Except for the shed, yes.
Uh.
On your, on your lot.
Yes. We've talked with Mr. Marsh.
Well, you know, I'm a Realtor, and when I help someone purchase some property and it's a vacant lot, the people that purchased the lot know what the setbacks are when they purchase it. And so with a creative architect like you, I would think that the trees wouldn't have to be vulnerable or the people's view corridor either. You can create something that will please everyone because you have a blank canvas. So to ask for a variance is confusing to me because that is changing those rules.
I'm falling on that. If you took the garage footprint and moved it as far back on the lot, away, as far away, as far east on the lot as you were permitted to by the setback.
Right.
It looks like you, remind me, you've got to be, got to have at least a five-foot setback there?
Yes.
It looks like you could get, with little or no movement towards the front of the lot, you could get that almost completely out of the trees.
In other words.
In other words, yes, you move the garage east and leave the house where it is.
You just have a longer raised level.
I think, you know, if you ask Luke to take another look at that, I suspect that he would say that you would not really be endangering those trees.
Okay. I appreciate your feedback, and I'd like to let Mitch, you know, testify as well.
Good.
I'll sit down.
Any more questions for Mr. Van Ness?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rich Seiberson, two-two-nine-six-seven North Seventy-Ninth Way, Scottsdale, Arizona. We don't have a mailing address here yet, or even an address for it. The one thing that I did want to mention, well, first of all, we're, we've been coming here for about fifteen years. And my, I mean, it's really nice to get out of the desert and the heat, but my wife's family is from Portland, and they've been coming here since the fifties, and they introduced us to Canada Beach, and soon as we came here, we fell in love with it. And, you know, we've been trying to figure out a way to, you know, to become part of the community and find something, and we finally did. So that's kind of how this whole thing started. But, you know, we want to be good, you know, neighbors and citizens and, you know, good stewards, you know, as well. But, so we're trying to make this work, and, you know, we don't want to come in here and just try to, you know, stir the pot. We're really trying to do things the right way and become a, you know, part of the community, so. But one thing I, one question or one thing that I did want to say was, the view from here shouldn't be impacted no matter where the house is because the other, because this is already six feet, and we're only, we're going to go up to about the same place. So this view here, whatever they have, shouldn't be impacted because this house is already here. So they can't, they can't see past this house this way.
By the other side of the street.
Pardon me?
By the other side of the street.
Right, the other side of the street is, is this.
That's just one, one house, that's a part of one house, not in the other house.
But I think that's pretty, as far as what we're really trying to do is to make sure that that's not impacted. Like they said, it's, it's a small piece, really, as far as, because the, the street, you know, is very wide. We're moving where they have the biggest view. So we're not, we're pinching it a little bit, but it's still pretty significant, so.
Can I ask you something?
Sure, you can.
I mean, you, I mean, this, you've got a terrific piece of property there, right on the ocean. I mean, it's just unbelievable.
Right.
And there's so many solutions to this problem without getting a variance. And I, and I would say, why, why, why do you want to move it, what's the?
Two, two things.
Because you can take care of it and stop doing that.
Right, we, the, the trees, and also we're, we're right up close to the Stephanie Inn, which is, you know, I mean, it's, it's significant. You know, I mean, it's right, right across the, you know, I mean, five feet away from our lot is, is the Stephanie Inn, and then the garage is, you know, three feet. So, I mean, it's, it's right there. So that, that's a, that's a big part of it. And then on the other side, you know, it's, you know, by the street, there's, there's more room. And whether it's, you know, I mean, do we have to go ten feet? I, I guess not, we can go five, but, you know, just to have more room between us and the Stephanie Inn would be helpful as well, probably for them as well. I guess maybe, maybe to hear from the Stephanie Inn, but, so I think it's, it's really two things. It's the trees, and then it's, it's the closeness, proximity to the Stephanie Inn.
Trees is easily solvable, right?
Yeah, and as we did, we tried to take.
Well, I mean, without a variance, except for the garage.
Well, we, you know, we, right, we had to, we had to move the house, you know, because, you know, there's some, some movement. We can move the house east and west as well. So we're trying to, to work this out with, with the trees. But also, in doing that, you know, we're still, we can't solve that problem with the Stephanie Inn. That's, that's a separate issue.
If that Stephanie Inn was there when you bought the piece of property.
Right, right.
Right, and design, you know, to have that, like, you know, not as many windows on, or, or windows that don't look right, you know?
Right.
And they may have a bigger, better neighbor than you could actually have.
No, no, we don't have any issues, no. No, no, we're, we're fine.
We're not going to throw parties.
No, it's all right, right. So, yeah, it's really just, and that's why we're here, is to talk about this and to see if there, if there was something that, that could be done, you know, where the house would be more centered on the property. We understand, we knew what the setbacks were. That's why we're coming here to try to get a, you know, some, you know, variance or some change.
Can I get to know your architect?
Thank you for your time.
Are there presentations by any other proponents of this application? Sir?
I'm Dave Norstedt, P O Box seven oh one, Canada Beach. And here, in my capacity, is Director of Operations for Martin Hospitality and also represent the O R S of the Stephanie Inn. And we strongly support this variance request. I, I think that the added distance between the Stephanie and the Seiberson's house will make a significant difference both for our guests as well as for the Seibersons. We live in a city that loves trees, we'd love to keep the trees. I think that it would screen at least their garage portion, part of their yard from at least some of the guest rooms on that side of the Stephanie. One thing I think that you might consider when you look at obstructing people's views is that there's some fairly significant elevation as you go east on the Bezena. Is that how you say that? It may not be, I, I'm not that familiar with that street, but I drive down Manaduska probably six times a day. And there's probably at least twenty feet of, twenty to twenty-five feet of fall from Hemlock down to Pacific there. So, and it's not quite as dramatic on the Bezena, but I think that would really help secure those views for the people on the east side of that street, so. Anyway, any questions?
Thank you. Any presentations by other proponents? Any presentations by opponents?
Jan Seiberman, P O Box seven seven eight, Canada Beach. I just wanted to say I'm really grateful for wanting to save the trees. We really do care about trees here, the more, the merrier. I do think also the neighbors should be respected with their views. And I think, just a suggestion, maybe you could build it a little bit smaller, your house, and that way. You know, I live in a small house, I've lived here for almost thirty years, and a small house can really be good in many, many different, you know, for many different reasons. And so you've got the great property, you've got a great community, you've got great trees. Just maybe slightly smaller, and then everything would be good, and you'd be farther from the Stephanie.
We thought this was a small.
Thank you.
Any questions for the listeners, though? Thank you, Jen. Any other, is there a staff response?
A couple of things came up. One was the distance to the fire hydrant. It's up on the corner of Hemlock and the Bezena, and I measured it at about four hundred feet from the site. The fire chief did not respond directly on this one. His answer on almost all of these is we would never get the fire trucks anyplace where they couldn't move around freely and easily, and instead they would just walk hoses back to narrow areas like that, so.
Do they park out your Hemlock?
Well, they might not park a Hemlock, but they aren't going to jam themselves all the way down to the end of the Bezena either. But they, he said, when I, when he's confronted with places where there's kind of narrow spaces between buildings, his usual response is, well, we wouldn't be driving a truck back there anyway, we'll walk our equipment in, so. But that's, he did not respond on this particular instance, so I don't know exactly what his thinking is here. The other thing that came to my mind when you were talking about the number of people whose views might be affected on the Bezena, I think Commissioner Burns said there were six houses, and I can't, yes, there's six houses on that side. The notice area on this only extends to the first two of them going up the hill from this side. So the other four closer to Hemlock were not notified by mail of this application because of the way we, our fire departments require to measure the notice area.
Okay, does the applicant or proponents wish to make additional statements? Okay. So, at this point, the hearing, let's see, I guess we, we're. And now, point of deciding whether we are going to decide this tonight or leave it open or?
Well, I'm not even sure you have a continuance request yet, so.
Presumably, we could continue it on our own.
Well, you can, yeah, you can continue it on your own. Yes, if you continue it on your own, the clock is definitely still running.
Okay. All of us have some discussion.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, I just, I was, I just want to say that I really appreciate applicants, you know, their values. I think it's great, I think the fact that they're concerned about the trees and, you know, I, I just think that's really great. I just, my feeling that we shouldn't grant what they're requesting is nothing, I mean, I would think, I think they seem like great people for this community, it's nothing to do with that. I just think that in this particular instance, there just isn't enough justification. There's not, there's nothing, you know, it's. There's not, there's nothing, you know, it's, it's new construction. I just, I can't see justification changing our setback.
Any other discussion before we move into the motion?
Well, my, my, my point, which I kind of made earlier, is that we have setbacks for Beesna. And I, I don't see when you're building new, new housing, why a full-size lot can't, can't be used within those setbacks. You know, and e- even if it means that, you know, some, some kind of scrubbing spruce may be, you know, impacted one way or another. As a matter of fact, the arborist isn't certain that they'll make any difference anyway. You know, Bruce is in there as well in his letter supporting, supporting this. But more than that, I just think that setbacks are there to protect people who are already on, on the street, who have a sense of what their view is. And, and they're there to protect people in the future who might be planning on building a structure as well. And, you know, when, when, when people buy a piece of property, you know, they, they buy its limitations as well as its pluses. And this piece of property has a lot of pluses. A lot of people in this town who would, you know.
Y'all swear.
I put a tent there. So I think we need to protect our setbacks.
You can offer a motion.
I move that we deny this application. For.
Okay.
The number of reasons given.
Uh, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
There's, there's a further discussion. Okay, let's call for a vote.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Where? Oh, yes, it is my question.
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. I wish you well with that, Mark.
It's going to be fantastic.
Oh, it'll be great.
Yes.
I will get this decision document out tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, next order of business. This is a cross-site judicial public hearing regarding consideration of C U seventeen dash oh one. North Stephanie Ralph, Hasteback Gardens LLC for conditional use to permit construction of a three-unit multifamily dwelling at 148 East Gower. The applicant, Dave Norstedt, on behalf of Hasteback Gardens LLC requests a conditional use permit to allow construction of a three-unit multifamily dwelling on an existing commercial property. The property is located at 148 East Gower Street, Taff Lot 11800, Nat 51030 A D. It is in a limited commercial C1 zone. The property is owned by Hasteback Gardens LLC. Municipal Code Section seventeen point twenty-two point zero three zero, conditional use is permitted. Requires a conditional use permit for multifamily dwelling in a C1 zone. The conditional use request will be reviewed against the criteria of Municipal Code Section seventeen point eight zero point one one zero, conditional uses overall use standard. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Does any commission member have any ex parte complaints? Has any commission member made a site visit? Yes. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a conditional use request for a multifamily residence right across the street at 148 East Gower. This is very similar to a request that this commission reviewed in 2014. In fact, the building itself and its location may be identical, technically, they're close to it being identical. The, the, the only thing that's really changed in any significant way to my way of thinking is that the rest of Hasteback Rock, Hasteback Gardens has been changed. They've done two things there. There was a major makeover of the, the outdoor space itself. That was reviewed and approved by the Design Review Board and that's what you can see out there. And the building, the office building itself has, has had an addition added to it since this was approved by you last. And you can see that out there. That did not require planning commission approval, it did require Design Review Board approval. This project, this proposal, if it goes forward tonight, would also require Design Review Board approval. Ordinance requires that projects that require both planning commission and D R B approval get planning commission approval first. So that's the sequence we're taking this. The, this is a conditional use in a commercial zone because it's not really a commercial use, it's a residential use. That's a not surprising result of the way we in most other jurisdictions write their zones. Non-primary uses tend to be conditional use uses. This is in a commercial zone, so it's not a commercial use, that's, hence the conditional use criteria. The, um, the criteria is set out in the staff report, I won't go through those individually. The numerical criteria are also addressed there. That is a kind of a, particularly parking is a calculation that gets a little bit complicated here because there are multiple uses relying on this very large site. I went through the numbers that the applicant provided and concur with them. They still hit their numbers as far as parking. They hit the other relevant numbers too. Design-related features of this building are not before you tonight, that's within the Design Review Board's purview. This is subject to the 120-day rule and this is subject to the, as the first evidentiary hearing, to a request for continuance. Our recommendation is approval. The staff report gave a more equivocating recommendation and I'm under some directions from my boss to be a little more direct about this, so there you go. We recommend approval, let's see if there's something tonight that causes you to think otherwise. The only condition I would add, and it's not really necessary anymore, it's an informational item for the applicants, is that it's conditioned on approval successfully through the D R B process.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Um, you said that, what about your boss?
City manager has directed me to be more direct in my recommendations to you.
I don't understand that, me.
The recommendation I gave here is that the planning commission either approve, deny, or modify the proposed conditional use permit. He doesn't want to see that language anymore, I just looked into the staff report, I'm sorry. He wants me to recommend approval or denial to you.
Well, off the record, I understand that he has been, he is the selectee for a different job and therefore he's really leaving.
That is correct, he's here for, through the month of June, basically, he'll be moving to Sisters to take a job there.
The city manager?
Yeah.
Oh, the current grant.
Yeah.
Oh. Anyway.
You can leave that part out.
Oh, wow. Okay, so.
The next guy may have a different view of this, but that's the, the direction I'm getting for now.
So, so the direction he's giving is you should unequivocally recommend or not recommend a project.
Yeah, he wants to see a more unambiguous recommendation from me.
Huh. Well, okay. No, well, I mean, I, I, I just think the way you've done it is very unfair.
Well, I thought so too, but.
No, really.
Well, I won't affect this one.
Uh huh.
It won't affect us, right.
Well, it never does, but. But I'm just saying, I, I just find that kind of, um.
I'm not sure this is the right point to introduce this, but I, I noticed, the, the one change that I noticed, right? Is there anybody else who was on the commission at the time that we did this before?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, is that they've gotten into this sort of strange alley, kind of coming in as a, as an entrance on the back and taking a more straightforward view of just, just coming in from Gower.
You had, honestly, I can't remember who the testimony was here at the D R B, but there was testimony from the people on the other side of the alley not wanting to see that alley approved. And they had reasons that were persuasive, either to you or the D R B, I can't remember now.
I think it was the D R B.
Yeah, but anyway, they, they have reasons that were persuasive to the decision-making body that that wasn't, that it shouldn't be approved, hence the access onto Gower here in this case.
Yeah. Okay. Any additional response?
Uh, no, none on this.
Okay. This is called for public testimony. The burden criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the West Door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directly toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan of municipal housing. Persons testifying will use to apply those decisions. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers in the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue concludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall receive first received recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is the representation by the applicant?
Yes. Mike Skidmore, 5309 Twenty-second Avenue Northwest, Suite B, Seattle, Washington, 98107. And I'm representing Hasteback Gardens LLC as the architect.
I did not get your address. Could you say your address?
Fifty-three oh nine Twenty-second Avenue Northwest, Suite B, as in Boyd, Seattle, 98107.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, who on the, uh, who up here had, had seen this back in 2014 when we, when we, when we approved it? When we came before you in 2014, who had seen this project?
I'm, I'm willing to have us respond to that. That's not something that's entitled.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, okay, I just.
I, I'm direct with as far as the present, that we get to decide.
Okay, okay.
I'm willing to have us do that.
Okay. This, nature of time and. I'm just going to throw up, uh, the site plan, I'll walk you through the site plan and the proper rendering. I also have elevations and photo plans, but it's, it's all the same material that's in your packet. So what we're proposing is to build a three-unit apartment building, this location on site. Currently it's overgrown, there's a gravel parking lot back here. You're, you're familiar with the site visit of the artificial turf and then the, the Hasteback, or, excuse me, Martin Hospitality's offices. The whole, the intent when we came back in 2014 was to start with this, probably build this, remodel the offices, do, do, do the gardens remodel. Due to that sequence, well, got out of sequence. We did get a prior approval from the planning commission and prior D R B approval. Unfortunately, our, uh, D R B approval expired, so that's why we're back in front of you. So now you have a different site plan from, from what we seen in 2014, but it now completes the overall vision. Where what we're designing here is, was to sort of look at its garden space, this, uh, and, and be used as two units. There's two, there's two four-bedroom units on the second, second floor. There's one one-bedroom unit on the ground floor plus four tandem parking garages in, in the project. I'd, I'd be happy to, and this is a, these are the computer renderings now inserted, as you can, as you can see in the distance here. This is the, this is the Martin offices back here, this is the, the garage side, this is, this is the, um, the garden side with, with the, um, the turf area I'm setting to the site. The difference between 2014 and now is that we've shifted the building five feet. We shifted the building five feet to the east, but we're still accessing the site off of the existing curb cut off of Gower Street. In 2014, we negotiated with the city on, on this access and the, the pedestrian protection and striking coming out of on to Gower from this new parking area. And we, we've kept that intact as we negotiated back in 2014 with the city. Hit on a couple of highlights from the, so a three-year apartment, um, three outdoor parking spaces, new outdoor parking spaces plus eight parking spaces inside the, the four garages that grade. The reason for the development of the residential units is to provide one market rate long-term rental for the community as well as for the owner to use the upper two floors for subsidized long-term employee housing. Explain how the demand exists for the uses of the proposed location. Well, rental housing, as you know, in Cannon Beach is pretty slim, especially subsidized or low-income housing. The purpose of this really was to, to, is to provide those four-bedroom units, the two four-bedroom units in it, on the site that the owner controls, closest proximity to the Surf Sand Resort. So that they can, they can use those to house some of the staff and people that come from out of town to, to work at the, the facilities. The proposed use will not create additional traffic congestion as the residential use requires less vehicle trips per day than a commercial or real or retail use would create. The city Public Works Department reviewed the site in 2008 and then again in 2014 and has indicated that water, storm drainage, and sewer capacities are adequate to serve the needs of the new development. Electrical service would be less than it was developed as a commercial use. Fire protection will be provided with internal residential fire sprinklers and access for the fire department is only three blocks away. The subsurface conditions of the site allow lightly-loaded structure to be built without any complications geotechnically. So we're not, there's no geotechnical implications to this, this site. And the site again is adequate layout for parking and as Mark mentioned, it's a mixed use, if you will, because you have the residential, new residential component and the office component. And with those two components, all of the parking requirements are met either within the tandem parking or the new three stalls we're creating or the existing parking that is out on, sorry, I have to get this, out on Evergreen Street. And one of the other benefits to this being close proximity is it helps promote foot traffic for those people that actually do work and it lessens car trips per day as well. Just want to highlight a couple of things from your comprehensive plan. The ship, the city shall, the city shall encourage employers to provide affordable housing in conjunction with their operations. We feel that this meets that criteria. The area between Taff Street and Gower Street, between the ocean and US 101, will continue to be developed, devoted primarily to residential use. Granted, this is a commercial use, it still has a commercial use on the site, but now we have the addition of some residential use. The city will consider the use of cluster development and planned development techniques as a means of preserving, preserving common open space, protecting significant natural features, and providing for a variety of affordable housing types. We feel like this, this site plan with the large garden area is not, the site is not maximized by any stretch of the imagination. It's forty, it's three units, the site is 30,000 square feet, which would allow you to build, do the math real quickly, which would allow you to build six, up to six units on this site, we're only proposing to do three. Were there any questions? I could, would you like to see the elevations or?
I have a question first. You, you call it residential, but it really isn't for any kind of permanent housing. Isn't it more like if, if a catering company comes in, they could stay in these apartments or?
No, that's not the intent.
Okay, well, then, who's it, who's, I mean, would you?
So, so the top two units would be controlled by, controlled by the owner to, to house staff, so.
Which would be flat?
Which would be, well, yeah, which would be, I, I think Dave Norsted could talk more about this, but I'll take a stab, is, is you, you are able to rent that room for the summer from your employer, for the summer, but they control it as a long-term, as a long-term rental unit. So it's not the caterer that's coming in to set up, set up that show or that wedding event is going to take that as a short-term rental. That's not the intent.
Okay, and then what about the other units?
The, the, the single unit on the ground floor is also intended to be a long-term rental unit.
And by long-term, you mean sort of like a seasonal worker, then you're talking?
Potentially, yes.
And if I remember correctly from before, it is, uh, I don't remember the terminology, but disabled but accessible.
Oh, it's absolutely A D A accessible, yes, this meets all building codes. Yeah, so the, the ground floor unit is accessible, correct, per, per, per the Americans with Disabilities Act of two thousand nine. The building complies fully with accessibility.
I'm confused about the tandem parking and how that's all going to work nicely with each other.
So this, we also, we also went over this, we went through this with the city, uh, tandem parking too deep, and the idea would be, you know, the idea here is that this serves, this serves the residential units and the rest of the parking on-site as required. The offices are served outside, so this could be used, if you're coming in from, let's say, I don't know, Portland or somewhere to work for the summer, your car gets parked, that's a logistic, logistics for the per.
So you have to know what your neighbor next door is, so if you want.
And that's why the top two units, the top two units are controlled, are controlled by, by the owner, the building owner. They essentially are renting it, renting it from themselves long-term and then put, and then having a place for the employees to stay when they come to work seasonally or otherwise.
And, and, uh, the way I was reading it is that you've got, and somebody else may correct me on this, presumably the person, if, if you're parked in the front position, the person parked behind you is somebody who is sitting in another, either the same bedroom or the same, or a different bedroom, but the same unit.
That's the idea.
So this is hardly a stranger.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the idea.
So much within the family unit that you.
Right, that was my interpretation. That was my.
So, they're, they're mirrors of each other, so one, two, three, four bedrooms, bath, bath, kitchen, entry. So this acts as a, what, a dwelling unit is a self-contained, right, a self-contained unit up to the bedroom. So those people would be, these four would have the four stalls below, these four would have the four stalls below, in essence, that's the idea.
Oh, up to them and down.
It's up to them.
Who parks where.
We have some divisions.
We're not encouraging.
Not affordable to a, to a family home in which you're, you're parking in the driveway with one car parked in front of the other car.
It's not ideal. My in-laws don't like that, yeah, yeah. My in-laws have houses like that in Cincinnati. Yeah, I get that, but.
But it does take care of the parking.
It does take care of the parking units, and it's permitted. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Do some more of these units.
Are there presentations by proponents? Are there presentations by opponents?
Jan Stever, former P O Box seven seven eight, I just basically have a number of questions. Uh, the first one is before, when they did this, I thought they weren't going to significantly take out any of those large trees. Is that still the case?
There's, there's no tree, no trees, we didn't remove.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing, as far as I remember, it was referred to before as employee housing, so in my memory, this is different, the, the way it's worded, is that true?
It's not intended, I didn't intend to present it that way. That's, it's the same intent, it's the same, it's for employee housing, the other two units, yes.
So is there some kind of written guarantee that we would have as a community that it would stay that way? How does that work? Mark?
Uh, I, I, yeah, I think you're, I, I'll pose the question for Mark because I would be interested in knowing that too. Can we put a condition that it be, that it be limited to employee housing? Because I have the impression that there was an issue with this on Elk Creek Road that historically, back before my time, and so I, I think this is, this is a reasonable question for us to ask.
Yeah, if you need that condition to meet any of the criteria, yes, that's a, a condition you could impose on the project. Otherwise, absent a condition like that, we really don't have any mechanism for controlling who those tenants are. We regulate short-term rentals and some other things, but not.
But that's a condition we can put on.
If you need it to meet one of the approval criteria, yes.
Okay, the, sorry, and the other question is, what was the square footage before and what is it now?
It's exactly, it's exactly the same. Twenty-four hundred and five square feet for the ground floor, nineteen hundred and ninety-nine square feet for the second level, for a total of forty-four hundred and four square feet of building. And I agree with the unit size, it's two, the, the top two units are nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet, the downstairs unit, I believe, is three, three sixty-nine, if someone noticed.
Okay, so if it, if you can put that condition on there that it really is for employee housing and that we have to stay that way in, what's the word, in perpetuity, I, I think I'd feel better about it. Thank you very much.
I, 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 could you explain why you feel better about that?
That we use it for employee housing?
Or that we, we condition it so that it must be used for?
Well, because things have been said that they were going to be for something like affordable housing before, and then they got built, they got permitted because of that, and then they got changed after they were built to just be, you know, renting out to like a motel, hotel. Or in a soul.
That would take a, uh, yeah, u- using it as a hotel or motel would probably take some change.
Yeah, not a short-term rental. Or a short-term loan, anything.
And permissions and so forth, but I think as far as rent, renting it as a long-term rental to somebody who wasn't an employee, I, I think the way things sit right now would, would be allowed. I think there, while Mark is made a good point, but I think in order for us to put that in as a condition, we would need to find one of the, uh, approval criteria.
A demand exists for use of proposed, no, a demand exists.
Yeah, oh, there, okay, yeah, so that was one of the.
Well, yeah, I mean, because the reason that maybe that people feel more positive towards this is because there is a demand for employee housing. A lot of businesses can't find places for their employees to live, to stay for the summer, and they have to try and find them. So there is a demand. There is not a demand, well, I guess it's objective, or subjective rather, where there's a demand for more short-term rentals for tourists. I mean, I would say, no, there isn't, but others, some people say, yes, there is, but I'm just saying, there's definitely, I think we can all agree that there's a demand for people to, for housing.
I guess I would, I would ask you, you and Mark and maybe Robin for an interpretation of when it says, uh, demand exists for thy use at the proposed location, I, I suspect that.
You said proposed.
Yes, but, but, but is that used in this, in this context specifically, and can, can that be interpreted as meaning employee housing or is it only?
I think you can tie this to A, you probably tie it to B also, so I, you know, after thinking about it, I think there's a way of hanging a condition like that on at least two of those. Yeah.
In my mind, yeah.
Are you right?
It's what they're saying, it is going to be, so we need to make sure that we understand.
Stay exactly, for the proposed use, which is for employee housing.
Yeah, I, I, certainly not suspicious of them, but I think you're right that the, uh, historically.
Yeah.
In other words, we can't, we wouldn't be able to rent them to a retirement.
That's right.
Yeah.
Employ is a pretty broad category.
Well, really, the IRS would say there's a, it's pretty definite, you know, who, who, you know, if you work for somebody, you're working.
I think it made a big difference in two thousand fourteen, why this was approved in the first place, was because that's what they said it would be employee housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, I'd like to clarify that. When, when someone proposes employee housing, it doesn't necessarily have to be employees working, but for that person making the proposal. In other words, you know, these, these could be rented out to all kinds of people that happen to be employed in Canada Beach.
Well, that's not how it's presented. It's not presented that way. It's presented as employee, employees of the complex that it's part of, at the margin.
Let, let, let me, would you come back?
Yeah, so.
Are, are, are we, just a minute.
Let me clarify, the intent is the two top four-bedroom units would be owned by Martin Hospitality as long-term rentals. The intent is to use those long-term rentals rented by Martin Hospitality to house employees. The downstairs unit is not intended to be specifically employee housing, and I don't think you can tie, you could, you could tie, we, we are specifying long-term rental versus short-term rental here. The reason for them to build this is eight bedrooms to get employees into. That's the intent. If the market isn't there, I don't know that you can attach the employee rental component to a long-term rental. It's not in your land use, it's not written in your land use code that way. So, the intent is what I'm, what I'm saying, and I, right, nice guy from Seattle saying something nice in Canada Beach. That's the intent, but it's a, it's a long-term rental situation for both top two floors, top two units and the bottom unit. But the bottom unit, I never said, was, we never said it was intended for employee housing. That was a long-term market rate unit on the ground floor. Does that clarify or do?
Uh, I think, I, I think that, that clarifies it to me.
It clarifies it, but here's my problem, is it's an intent which can always change. Like you said, I mean, what's, what, or maybe I should ask Mark this, what would, what would, what would foreclose them in the future if they didn't have, you know, employees renting the place from putting it, you know, in the lottery for a short-term rental or for, you know, any of the other, um, or the fourteen-day rental? What would stop them from doing that?
Our current code wouldn't allow them to do that, but not to say that our short-term ordinance might not change in the future, but currently they, they could not rent those upper units or lower units for that matter, as short-term housing, or short-term rental as it stands today.
I could just add one more. The benefit, I think one of the benefits, we're adding nine bedrooms. We're adding nine bedrooms to a pool of, of housing. I think that are long-term, that we are saying are long-term, not short-term rentals.
And what is your definition of long-term? Is it fourteen days?
It's whatever, it's whatever in the land use code your, your ordinance states.
They have different.
Our, our ordinance has one definition, that's thirty days from now.
Thirty days is definitely.
So, it seems to be a, I've been here, I think, I think that does.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there seems to be a disconnect between misunderstanding and what you've told us about whether we can put a condition that it, uh, that we're only approving this for rental to Martin Hospitality employees, that, but you, you can assure us that, that we can in fact put that in, in that would stick?
I believe you can because it's tied to a condition. That said, there's a couple of other things that were said that I, that you, I think you already know, but you should, you should think about. One, it said Martin Hospitality, the vast majority of their employees don't work on this site. They work the Wayfair, Stephanie, or the, um, the former lumberyard or other places in the town, so they aren't working at this site at Hayside Gardens, they're mostly working, I would guess, off-site. And then, you know, the other question is, is, you know, what happens at some unknown day in the future when, uh, they start buying and selling, you know, units of Martin Hospitality or split up or acquired by other companies? I have no idea how that, how to word that in a way that would make that enforceable in a meaningful way in that instance. So I, I think you can, you can easily impose a condition about no short-term rentals. That I can understand and enforce. If you say it's for employee housing for Martin Hospitality, you know, as long as Martin Hospitality exists in the form they do today, I could probably manage that too. The, the far downstream outcome of that, I'm a little less certain about.
Another way of looking at this is if Martin can't come up with nine bodies to fill the beds, do we as a city desperate for, for employee and affordable housing of any sort intend to say, well, that's great, we don't want anybody, we don't want another person to find housing in Canada Beach?
You say it's affordable.
I don't know if it's affordable or not.
We haven't been talking about that.
Yeah, it may not be affordable.
Well, it, it will be probably if you've got employees in there. You know, and I, I just think that it's crazy trying to, we have categories for housing in this town, and, uh, employee ain't one of them. You know, and as, as I look at this, I see somebody coming in and building some housing that will certainly not eliminate the problem, but make it a little bit easier for employees to find places to live. I don't think it might be trouble filling the, with their own employees, frankly, but why, why do we want to nitpick, you know, something that, that is an attractive, well-designed, functional, useful to the city structure?
I don't, I don't think it's nitpicking, Joe, I, I just don't. I mean, I think it's, it's an important distinction, because, I mean, you either are building affordable employee housing or you're just, you know, doing that temporarily and then, and then later converting it into a, you know, another, another fourteen-day rental or, you know, I mean, I just, or, or maybe.
Probably thirty.
Thirty-day rental, I'm sorry, right, thirty-day rental.
And we like those.
Well, maybe you do.
As a city, we do.
Well.
That's our, that's our definition of long-term housing.
Yeah, that is the definition, long-term housing, but maybe not everybody thinks it should, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that I think that, you know, or, or turning it into some, you know, fancy expensive apartment for someone, you know, I mean, you don't know what it's going to end up as. That's why at least making an effort to, to put some kind of conditions, maybe they won't hold up in the future, but at least to make the effort to do it, I don't think it's nitpicking. I think it's, it, if the problem is in this community is affordable housing for people who work here, and this is some of a step towards that salute, towards that, addressing that problem if that's the way it stays, and we have no guarantee that it is. So we can try at least. Well, we still don't have that guarantee, we can make an effort.
Let me throw another angle at this, and again, Rob, Robin may have a more perspective on this, but it seems to me if you're, if you say we're going to have two units, each of which has four bedrooms, uh, that, you know, that, that configuration is sounding like a, you know, a co- college dorm suite kind of. sounding like a, you know, a college dorms week kind of arrangement, it doesn't sound like...
Or a fancy apartment.
Uh, I don't know, I never lived in a fancy apartment.
Four-bedroom apartment, I think would qualify.
But you don't have any living room area and stayed in it, you just have a kitchen?
Not very much, no.
It's not particularly a place that everyone on the bottom would want to live, you have your own bed and period, but it doesn't allow for much community to react.
Ways to figure it out.
Right, going to save your account. I think it's pretty incredible that they want to provide housing for their employees, because I think it's difficult to find housing if you're a single person that comes down and wants their own living, and not go back and forth to Astoria every night or 5:00.
I agree, I think it's something that's...
I think it is very interesting.
That's not, that's my concern, if that's what it's going to be, I think that's great. I just wanted to see some guarantee, I guess, that it's going to seem like that.
My, my, my perspective on it is that, that it's, it's built in a way that it's going to be attractive to, and compatible with the use that they say they want to use it for, and it's not going to be well-suited to other uses, and that's why I asked you to, you think I'm kidding myself, Robin?
I agree with you.
Huh?
I agree with you.
I do, I, I don't think that any of us would want to move into one bedroom unless they're going to make it into a retirement housing, so, did you share with four other people you know? They don't know.
I'd just like to...
Or seven others.
Yeah, seven others, whatever. I'd like to see that we clarified what these were being.
Okay.
They can always come back and say it isn't working, and then we can talk about it a bit, but I think that's what their intent is in the request, and I would like to personally see that appelled, this is too tempting a town. I mean, we're just the best place in the world, so people will do anything to stay here, and I, I think we need to be wise.
I appreciate it.
Okay, let's see, how far down we got to the ordinance, do you have to stay after this?
I, I've said all I need to say.
Okay, uh, does the African editor want to make additional statements? Yes, sir.
Dave Norstedt, P O Box 701, Canada Beach. Yeah, I, this, this entire complex is really designed for, really for single people, as you mentioned, it's really more of a sort of a dorm style, I think you're seeing this as a fairly popular housing style, like in Seattle, where young people live in these sort of, um, shared kitchen, living room areas, and it is affordable, you know, I think that we're looking at somewhere in the maybe $400 or $500 a month range for a bedroom, um, and if you had double occupancy in one of those bedrooms, which we would allow, um, you know, you would, you'd be in there for somewhere between $200 and $300 a month, I would think. We would pay the utilities. I, I think trying to limit it by just saying it's employee or, um, just for Martin Hospitality employees, seems like the limitation could just be that it's long-term, if that's 30 days or whatever, you know, I, I think that our owner's intention is to be here for a very long time, this is a very expensive building to build, um, and his, or their commitment, um, to doing it, and the timeframe that it's going to take for this to have any kind of return on investment for us is pretty, pretty significantly long, so, um, I just, I, I can pretty much assure you, for the time that I'm here, and for the time that Ryan and Stephanie Snyder are here, that this building will be used for exactly what we're saying it's going to be used for. I, the, putting a different, uh, some other type of designation on it or limitation, seems like it would, if they ever did want to sell the property, would certainly be an encumbrance on that, I would think, but, um, you know, that's not what, what we're thinking, maybe there's an opportunity for them in the future to come back to the planning commission and change that, but, um, it, it would seem like just making it a, a long-term rental would solve everybody's issue of this, from my perspective, so.
Well, why would you mind if it was the other way? I mean, what's the problem with it?
Well, again, if, if the owners decided at some point that they had to sell, or they wanted to sell, I think that that designation would be an encumbrance of the property, that's how I would see it.
Which is the intent.
But you just read a contingency, when you're writing, making an offer that you would visit the planning commission to change that, um, if, if that would be what we could do?
Yeah, and I, I'm, I mean, you certainly would know much more about that than I, Robin, but, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have had some discussion, however, you'd like to have a motion. Does anybody have any, like, any further comments?
I think we, I think if we specify this is for long-term house, 30-day or long housing, that gets to a lot of what the concern is, I think, and it's not going to get turned into, you know, over light kinds of housing, and, uh, it's our, it's our language, I mean, we, we gather this all the time, and it wasn't all that long ago when we had another one of these conditional zoning requests, um, and we, you know, just got turned over to two partners, which would have passed the churn ultimately, and I think we ought to congratulate these folks for stepping up to the real problem in this town of housing, and that is that, you know, nobody wants to provide reasonable housing for the employees that they so, you know, demand. It's, it's kind of like everyone not wanting to pay $15 an hour.
No, I don't think that, why, is that the issue on this thing, shows any lack of congratulations?
Uh, you know, I, I, I don't think that's true, I, I think that if we start coming up with new restrictions, um, something that is clearly a benefit for the city, you know, economically, physically, and, um, it's not going to encourage other employers in this town to follow suit, and I think that I would love to see the Pelican crowd have to build themselves, you know, some housing to clear the parking problem out for that.
They're saying, they're building for their employees, and that's all we're saying, is keep it that way, as long as you're, until they, if and until there's a big change, you know, switch over, then they can come back to the planning commission, I, I just don't see why that's such a huge encumbrance.
I don't think it's enforceable, frankly.
Yeah, I don't either, I don't think that's legal.
Well, and they've been a pillar in the community as far as employing people, and they employ a great number of people, and they've had a lot of experience with the benefits of, of need for this type of housing.
Right, I think it's...
And we have just chosen trust to them, that they are going to follow through with what they say they want to do.
When the planning commission approved this last time, was it as employee housing?
Um, it was presented that way, there was no approval.
Okay, and that's been the assumption all along this evening, that it was approved that way before, so it's an easy approval tonight, and I'm seeing a change in, in our perception of what it could be, and so there's a difference.
To clarify on something, if we approve this as presented, without the additional conditions, it's my understanding that the only use that they could make of it is as long-term rental, right? In other words, they couldn't, they couldn't do short-term rental, they couldn't do...
Under our current ordinance, no, they could not convert these to short-term rentals.
Even though it's zone conversion?
Correct, because you're not approving motel here, and, um, our short-term rentals deal with residences and, um, multifamilies in this town are not subject to that.
I just think, first of all, as Joe said, how are you enforced if you rent to an employee? They might be, you know, their own employee, somebody else's employee, I'm not sure that's illegal, possibly.
And we're, more and more, we're living in a surveillance society, so I'm sure it would be done.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know, this, I agree, you know, this sounds like, like a thing to me, and there, there's really something that's not done.
As long as it's employee housing, that's what the need is.
Okay, so the, the alternate, the, the other, if, if it're not employees, the, the notion that's brought up, that it might be, now, who would it be occupied by if not somebody's employees, and...
Months of... It could be someone who wants to come and live here for a month or two each.
In a, in a sort of dorm...
E V O O.
Yeah. Right, there'd be...
Yeah.
Ezel.
Yeah.
Everybody rents out bedrooms.
Okay.
Well, to, to give this off the time, I'm going to move that we approve this application, uh, condition my, uh, the assertion that it is meant for long-term housing.
A second. Is that something that's enforceable, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see any, any expectation that the, uh, city council would ever bother with that. You don't have, you don't have...
I, I have zero insight into, into the brains of the city council, so, no.
Uh, do we have some discussion before we go to the... Okay, let's call it off.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
No.
Commissioner Burnt?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
No.
Com- Chair Lundee?
Yes.
All right, we'll get that decision document out tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, back to the... Uh, okay, is that what you're going to do? Do you have a tree report?
Yeah, we got three.
All right, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
There's two months worth of tree reports in there, because we did not have a main meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Ongoing by any items?
Um, nothing, I don't know, you know, from me.
Oh, I, I have something, I'm curious, um, has anyone from the city been out recently to look at the Nicholson property?
I was out there last week, I've not been out there this week.
Okay, and the retaining law, they go, that...
Yeah, I built it to spec, I don't think it's had the final, I'm not sure if it's had a final inspection from the building inspector yet or not, I'm, I'm not sure about that, um, the intermediate inspection was, uh...
That it, it conforms with the plan?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it passed the intermediate inspection, I can't remember if it was a footing inspection or a rebar inspection.
It's sure way uglier than I have, I don't know.
It's in a different location than I...
It hadn't started putting any plans in, which...
And I can't imagine they'd be building that whole, very...
It looks like it's in a di- and, and maybe I just didn't understand the original plan, but it looks like it's in a different location than it was originally supposed to be.
You're not the only person who's raised that point, and I, I've gone for the plans every way I can, and it seems like they're building it exactly where they said they were.
Okay. I guess I didn't understand it.
Well, like I said, that, that it, it was a construction problem, because you're not the only person who's raised that.
And certainly, when I was up, the, the road at the top, the, the driveway end, I think it was considerably widened and, it, it looks, it looks very different.
It does, it looks so different from the pictures.
Being either in the glows of models, and the way the land was before.
Well, and when he was proposing it, he said that that hole would be during the landscape and the wall, and she did none of that.
Yeah, there's another, there's another landscape contractor involved in that, and I can't remember the company's name right offhand.
Yeah, I would think somebody would be watching that, because there were some things that they said they would do.
Well, the landscaping of that wall's an enforceable condition, so, I don't know, they...
It's really bare.
Yeah.
Also, we were down there to watch the sunset, and some people that came up, we were talking to them, and they said that there were some eagles down in that area trying to build a nest, and if that's correct, then all, I believe, I have it at law, if they cannot continue to hammer and pound during their mating or pre-season, whatever you want to say, and I don't know if there's a nest in there, but these people were finding houses under the trees, which we could not find, we did look for.
Are eagle, are the, are the eagles protected at this point?
They're, they're no longer on the U.S., the federal endangered species list, but they still enjoy some state protection.
Yeah.
But honestly, I, I don't know much more about how that operates mechanically.
You know, it's kind of scary to me, is that all this can just take place, and there's, there's nothing, I mean, no one's monitoring it, I mean, it just seems like they can do whatever they want, and no one, I mean, if they, if, you know, they could be, you can't stop people from breaking laws all the time, but I'm just saying, I, I don't know, I can't, you know, I mean, I, I'm not allowed to walk up there and ask them questions, because I'd be trespassing on their property, you know, so...
Well, we have building permits enforced that are inspections, and they still need to meet those conditions.
They're used those drawings and those, it's got to be like that, right?
Yeah, um, their first dwelling permit is in, and this will be for the northwest lot, um, I can't remember what number that is, probably lot number one, but at any rate, that, where the old house was, approximately.
They completely ripped to the ground.
Right, so the, the first dwelling permit for that, that, that house has been approved, they haven't broken ground yet, though, but the, the dwelling was approved, and it met, you know, the square footed height, those requirements, geotext requirements, um, so that's, we've approved that, it hasn't started yet, I don't know if it's going to start this summer, I don't know, I would guess it is.
Okay, I, my phone buzzed me sometime back, and I think it's probably my wife saying, am I coming to pick her up?
We're going to get a doc, George.
So, we have to...
So, I turned to me...
Well, hold on, we need a, a motion to adopt, uh, to, for the chair to sign the orders.
Is, is there a motion to...
I vote that we have, have the chair to sign this stuff.
I second it.
So, we need a denial for...
I think that's a motion, and that we don't have to take a vote.
I'm sorry, who just moved to sign that order? I didn't catch that.
I seconded it, Joe.
Yeah.
Who was the first? Oh, Burnt.
Joe Burnt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think if that justice, you know, you can...
Well, we haven't put this out in time, although we could, I assume we will say...
Well, today.
While that, you're in this place.